I'm so happy today to have Jesse Burke here. I've been waiting for you to come on the show for a while. Everyone I've talked to about you is just have nothing but positive things to say.
It's nice.
You're kind of like a celebrity to me. I feel a little starstruck right now, but um, but yeah, thanks for coming. This is awesome.
Thanks for having me.
I wanted to get started with just getting to know your district. I recently had another candidate from District Four, which is a little more rural in Multnomah County, but also important. And I also just wanted to mention like how important this upcoming county race is to me. Like I think, I think a lot of people still don't know about it.
Right.
So I'm trying to just get people's attention about it. But yeah, tell me and tell people a little bit about your district.
Yeah, so I'm in District Two, which is north and northeast Portland. The boundaries, the southern boundary is I-84.
Okay.
So just above that would be like Lloyd District, if you're closer in. And then the northern boundary is the Columbia River. The eastern boundary is northeast 148th and the western boundary is St. John's. So like the St. John's Bridge would be the edge of it.
Gotcha.
So those are the boundaries. Our previous commissioner was Sushila Jayapal. She recently stepped down to run for Congress for Earl Blumenauer's seat. But the reason that this race is important, actually, all four commissioners, not the chair, but all four commissioners are running in this primary in May. So Julia Brim Edwards is running for her seat again. Lori Stegman in District Four is termed out, so there are people running in her district. The person that I hope wins is Vince Jones Dixon. But Sharon Myron is also termed out this year, so District One is running.
Okay.
Mine is a special election because this wouldn't normally be the, the cycle.
Because she stepped down, is that right?
Right, because she stepped down. So this mine would be like a two-year term or two and a half year term. So anyway, everyone is up in May, and this is the last year that the county will have primaries. We're gonna move to the same model the city does next year where there are no primaries. It's all in November and it's all ranked choice voting.
Okay, I didn't know that. Yeah.
So anyway, this is, a lot of people have watched sort of the swing of the votes. And the reason other districts have been really eager to like host fundraisers for me or things like this is that you'll notice Sharon Myron and Julia Brim Edwards tend to vote one direction and the other three vote the other direction. And it can feel a little like there's a philosophical divide. The way I see it is a little bit more like idealism versus realism. There's a, this editor from Portland Monthly once told me, she's from New York and I'm from DC. And she said, I tell people that what I'm observing is I think that some, in the, you know, simplest of four, of terms, that the, uh, the east coast has liberal pragmatism and the west coast has liberal idealism. And, but I think what's shifting is like you've got more people that are trying to bring this pragmatism. Like you can have all of these ideas, but what can you implement and what's actually working? So people in all of these districts have been talking about my race because it's the one that would swing it. So if Julia wins, it's net neutral. If say Vadim wins in Sharon's district, we're net neutral. So we need myself and/or Vince to win to help to swing it the other direction, right?
Yeah.
So anyway, that's um.
No, that's good. That's a cool breakdown and I, you know, I didn't know about the, the upcoming primary change and that kind of stuff. That's interesting. Yeah.
Did you want to know more about the district or?
No, I mean, I just, yeah, I just like a good little outline from people and like their understanding of the district.
Yeah.
And also, yeah, I obviously wanted to mention the DA race is hugely important as well. I mean, that's part of this election. And yeah, that's really cool. And yeah, just tell me about why you kind of got into this. I know obviously you're a business owner in Old Town. Just yeah, tell me about what got you interested in watching me into this.
I will say I never saw this in the cards for myself. I, I try and tell people for some context. So I grew up in Washington DC and when I was about six, my father was paralyzed. And four years later, my sister was born with a severe birth defect. And my parents, this is all before the Americans with Disabilities Act had been created. So we were, so you don't get any money. And we were just drowning in debt and poverty. So we moved into my aunt's basement and my mom cleaned house, my mom cleaned houses for a living and we all had to go with her and clean houses with her. And they told all of us that if we wanted to get out, we had to become good at something. And so they kind of put us in different sports. I think they didn't think like, you know, academics was not going to be our scholarship route, so they put us in different sports.
Physical?
Yeah. My brother was like a superstar athlete, so every sport he went into, he did really well. And he ultimately got a full ride to George Washington University for soccer and was routed to play internationally until his leg was severely broken playing soccer. But my sport was fencing that they put me into and I think my father was being pretty strategic that it's a fairly obscure sport. Not a lot of people did it at the time, but almost every university has a Division One program.
Is that right?
Scholarships. So when I was about 12 years old, I started when I was eight. When I was about 12, um, my, I won my first competition. And my parents were like, what do you want to do with this? This is in 1992. I was like, I want to go to the 96 Olympics. And so they were like, okay, but you can't stay here then. And they sent me to upstate New York to live by myself at a training facility. So I did three Olympic trials. I did the 96 Olympic trials. I didn't qualify, but I was, they take the top four. I was ranked sixth. And so they took me to Atlanta with them to train with the team.
And you're, what are you, 16 or something?
I was 15 at the time, yes. And I did the 2000 and 2004 Olympic trials. But I was on the world championship teams in between and traveled with the national team representing the US.
Wow, I had no idea.
Yeah. So that was sort of my path out. And I did get a full ride to Penn State for that. And in that time, I was like, okay, I need to major in something that, growing up so poor, I was like, I have to figure out how the system works to help as many kids that were in my situation get out. And so I studied teaching. We moved to Portland. I taught at an after-school program at Roosevelt High School, working with high-risk kids. I later became the education coordinator at the Native American Youth and Family Center, helping kids either finish high school or get into college. But it just felt like there was so much red tape and I was like, maybe it's policy. And so I went back and got my master's in public administration. And I ultimately did an internship. You know, I think when you're in college, you're like nonprofit and government, like that's God's work. And private sector is, you know, the devil.
Right.
And, and I thought those same things. And then in graduate school, I did an internship at a government agency and I got a temp job at an investment banking firm. Okay. Just like as an admin. And at the government agency, I, I thought we were all supposed to be there for the greater good. And what I saw was that people were using it as a stepping stone to either run for public office or it was a career move. And I know everyone's maybe, everyone's maybe using a job for a stepping stone, but it just felt really obvious.
Purely a transitional.
Right. And, and you could see like why things weren't moving faster for the people they were serving was, they weren't really thinking about that.
Do you want to say which agency it was or?
It was Prosper Portland.
Oh, okay. I thought you meant like a big federal, but I see.
No, no. Yeah, it was a local bureau. And then at the investment banking firm, I mean, these guys were nuts. They're like, they're at work at four o'clock in the morning before the markets open on the east coast. They're stressed all the time. They're drinking Pepto Bismol like out of the bottle. And I was like, why do you guys do this? And they were like, for money and power. And I went back and told my husband, I said, you know, I don't agree with that reasoning, but at least they could tell the truth. And I realized that that mattered more to me than anything else. And I said, I think that I need to go private sector and just help people because I chose to rather than because it was my job to do it. And so at that job, actually, I wrote my business plan for my first business, which was Posey's Bakery and Cafe. And the reason I chose a bakery is not because I had any right to operate a bakery, but my parents were still living in my aunt's basement. And there were no children that they were watching anymore. And so I, my mother had gone back to pastry school and I said, I'll open a bakery if you come work out here. And she fought me a little bit on it, but I guilted her into it because I knew it was in her best interest to come out here. So all of that is sort of my, growing up with that instability, I understand probably better than most what people are going through. Like I lost a brother-in-law to an overdose. A lot of family members I have suffer from addiction. A lot of family are living still in abject poverty. And so it's not so far off for me. And then during the pandemic, things got so bad in Old Town. I tell people the two things that really tipped it for me. One was when our private security came to me and asked if I had any ties to the Chinese mafia. And I said, I do not, because my mom is Chinese.
Yeah.
And they said.
I didn't even know the, there is like a mafia presence.
Well, I mean, I don't know. It's not really the circles I run in, but, but they said, we could help with ownership. This is in 2020.
I see, I see.
Because organized crime is coming. We have Armenian gangs, Somali gangs, Mexican gangs, 18th Street gang has taken over St. John's. And you know, this is not the world I live in, but I was like, okay, the building next door is run by the Chinese mafia. All orders go from Portland to New York to Hong Kong. I'll give you their number, but I won't have anything to do with it. And then about a year later, um, my phone started ringing off the hook in the middle of the night. And it was all the residents and businesses in Old Town. And they said, hey, there were just 300 rounds shot. And I was like, why are you calling me? You should call the police. And this is at the time I'm the chair of the Old Town Community Association. And they were like, we don't know who to call. And the next day I got to work and had them pull the audio from our rooftop cameras. And I listened to it and the reason everyone was calling was there was a machine gun shootout and you can hear it. And it's really, really upsetting. And I got on this call because the mayor started having these weekly problem solver calls. And I didn't know my mic was on and I let out this big sigh and they were like, that's a pretty big sigh, Jesse. Are you okay? And I burst into tears and I was like, I'm not. Is anyone here? There was a machine gun shootout last night and no one called the police. They called me. And I was like, that is too much pressure. I'm just a small business owner trying to raise three children. I don't have a military. I don't have a police force. I don't even have a gun and I'm the person they're calling. And it was too much, so.
Why do you think it, what, why do you think you were the person?
You know.
People trust you and?
It happens a lot. Well, what ended up happening was they asked me to write a recovery plan. The city did ask me to write a recovery plan for the city, for the neighborhood. And I was like, okay, you might regret it, but I'll do it. And, and I wrote it and then I did a series of press conferences. So everyone knew that they promised to do it.
Wow.
And then they asked me to do it for Central East Side and then they asked me to do it for St. John's. And there came a point where I was doing so much volunteer work that was the work of the government. Like in the last two years, we've managed $2 million of capital projects for the city.
Wow.
And as a neighborhood association, like as citizen volunteers, not charging anything because nothing's happening.
Yeah.
And.
Well, I was just thinking, yeah, all that work just to me sounds like what a politician would be doing or should be doing, you know?
So when Sushila stepped down, Sharon Myron, one of our current commissioners called me and she's like, you need to think about doing this. Like you're already doing work.
Right. You're basically doing it anyway.
Right. And you know, I was spending a lot of time begging people to, to do what I was asking. And at least then I could be a vote rather than begging people. And you know, I'm on the ground. I, I, I always make people meet me.
Right.
Because usually people complain about their situation and then they come to where I am and they're like, oh my God, I don't have any problems.
Totally. Yeah. Well, that's, I was just thinking, it's so funny that you're, you know, even before I met you, you have like this positivity to you and you seem even more positive now that I meet you, but it's like, it's just surprising given, you know, because I used to live downtown. I used to work downtown for 10 years and I know how, right now, that's kind of the heart of a lot of problems, especially Old Town, but.
Yeah.
So it's just surprising that you have such an optimism and like a brightness to you.
Yes, I, it's a joke. It's a joke in my family that they're like, all right, like rein it in. Cause I'm always like, look on the bright side.
Well, that's cool. Yeah.
So I don't know how I think it's, I can't watch any depressing anything. That's why I don't watch the news. I don't read the newspaper. Reporters will say, oh, did you see that article? And I'm like, of course not. I'm like depressed, like surrounded by depressing things all the time. Why would I read more depressing things? So I once told a reporter, the day you write a positive article is the day I'll read it. I was like, I can't take anything else. So I, they tease me that like, my family teases me, the only movies I watch have like a, a 30 score on Rotten Tomatoes. Like they have to be like super bad and super funny.
That's, that's funny. Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm a, you know, filmmaker kind of person and I always, I like IMDb scores personally, but that's a good, I mean, Rotten Tomatoes is good too. That's a funny. I enjoy guilty pleasure movies like that too, just to like, you know.
It, there cannot be too much, um, the arc cannot go too low.
Yeah, that's funny. Um, um, let's see here. Yeah. I, I wanted to just comment on also like, because you, I think on your site and a lot of things you put, you know, Multnomah County is kind of forgetting their job right now. And I, when I hear that, I think they're, and I've thought of this even without like looking at your website, but to me, it's like, I am, I'm so mad at the county right now, but um, it seems like they're focusing on anything but the actual issues that we have. And it's just really frustrating. And yeah, like we were saying before, I, I hope there's a lot more interest in this May election because I think there is a lot of frustration in the county. But like, what do you think that, where does that dysfunction come from? Is it just like that imbalance of votes right now, like you've mentioned earlier?
I think.
The leadership.
I tell people this a lot and I'm hoping that with enough people repeating it, we can shift this in sort of our region. So there's this book that's required reading for all of my staff at the hotel and it's called The Five Dysfunctions of a Team.
Okay.
When I first opened Posey's, someone, a reporter said, is this at all like a sports team, you know, because you did sports professionally for so long? Is it like, and at the time I was like, what a dumb question. And later I'm like, that was a really good question. Actually, that was exactly what it's like. Like you're running a sports team all the time. It's just a different environment and the work is different. And so if you imagine being at work and like people giving you feedback relative to being on a sports team, right? Like you all know you want to win.
Right.
On a sports team. And so when your teammates or coach give you feedback, you don't get upset because you're like, this is your blind spot. We all want to win. We want you to win. But when you get it at work, people don't react that way, right? And so this required reading is essentially, it's called The Five Dysfunctions of a Team. And the five dysfunctions are a lack of trust, a fear of conflict, a lack of commitment, which means whatever we decide at the table, when we leave, we're selling it like it was our idea. You can't leave and say, well, I didn't really want to do that anyway, when people criticize it, because you cut the legs out from under it. The fourth is a lack of accountability and the fifth is inattention to results. I will say I sent a digital copy of this book to every one of our city and county elected officials in 2020. And I said, you guys have all five of these. Let me know if you want me to facilitate a trading.
That's what I was going to ask you. Is this all five or?
Right. And I do think that that is part of it, but one of the things that I see is that we are avoiding talking about the hard things and trying to resolve these hard problems because we fear conflict. We fear these, the small group of, there's a quote from George Washington about this, this small, it's not, I'm going to totally mess it up, but the small group of saber rattlers, right? And that it's like, you've got to be willing to do it anyway, right? Like what is the right decision? And you have to do what is in the best interest of the majority of citizens. And right now, everyone is so afraid of getting canceled. Everyone is so afraid of someone showing up at their house that they don't do it. And so you have nothing and that isn't how governments can function. And much like, you know, I tell people, a business would never survive if you didn't meet your budget and you didn't deliver a product to your customer. They would never come back. So I do think that there's, in addition to what I said, a lack of executive experience where people know how to execute on a plan. So in graduate school, when I studied public administration, my focus was on community development and strategic planning. There is a process to execute a plan and even the 90-day emergency.
Right.
Which was hilarious. I was like, I mean, it's been an emergency for like five years, but.
I don't think anyone saw that and was like, didn't laugh, basically.
I mean, I was talking to a nurse that works in our neighborhood because we, we came up with all sorts of programs. Like we have a, so the Old Town Community Association is a 501(c)(3). And there's a committee called Oasis that does outreach to the homeless community. We have a contract with Radio Cab where we transport people to shelter. We transport them to the hospital and we pay for it. It's a, we have a code. All the social services use it in the neighborhood, as does this woman that does outreach. She's a nurse. And then the county started using our code. And I about lost my mind that I was like, you have all the money that you could possibly need and you're leaning on a neighborhood association.
Yeah.
Who's trying to just move the needle in our neighborhood. So.
Did they, I'm scared. Did they try to take credit for that or?
I cut the code off that the second I found out, I was like, turn it off. We're not doing this. If everyone isn't staying and funding their own thing.
I see, yeah.
I understand if our social services want to use it that are in our boundary, but anyway, so I talked to the woman that runs this and I was like, I think we need to write our own 90-day emergency plan because they don't know what to do. And then we're going to have a bunch of press conferences to tell everyone what should be happening. Because the pace, like this is not how you would execute an emergency, right? Like we're going to study it for 45 days.
Yeah, everything's a study.
And then we're gonna talk about, we're gonna talk about housing 50% of the population. And someone asked me the other day, what do you think about this plan? I said, any plan that does not include 100% plus 10% of the current population or 110% of the current population is not a plan. Because we're, then we're planning for failure, right?
You're, when you say the plan, are you talking about the 90-day thing or the more recent that county?
The thing that they, this was part of the plan. The, the thing that the county just released was the work that they hit based on their research.
Their final goals and all that stuff.
We're gonna house what 2,500 people, which was 50% of the population.
And it's aggregate, so aggregate to be in 2014 to do this or excuse me, 2024 to do this. Yeah.
Yes. So I just think that unless we're like, what is the seven habits of highly effective people? They say, begin with the end in mind. The end is, we don't have this problem. And, and so how do we work backwards from there?
Yeah.
And so I just, I'm just not confident that people know how to execute this. And I think there are a lot of players at the table that don't have enough real world experience, not real world, like, do you work in a social service agency? But like, have you ever had to, like if you're self-employed, have you ever had to find your own customers? Have you ever had to deliver consistently because you're not guaranteed a paycheck? When you're guaranteed a paycheck, it changes how you approach things.
Yeah, self-initiative and all that stuff is really important. I was actually thinking right before you said that, like, do you think, because when you were talking earlier about your experience with that agency and then, and what was it, a, a bank or whatever?
Yeah, an investment banking firm.
To me, I'm, I'm a pretty capitalistic guy, but did that, is that kind of what you're talking about of like, because to me, it's always like so helpful to have that business experience. Because there's so many people in government who have no experience implementing anything in a real way or spending money in a real way.
My husband was asked to be on, or I appointed him to the Budget Committee for Prosper Portland. And he had a suggestion of can you tie how much, so in urban renewal areas, there's a certain amount of tax increment finance dollars dedicated to that district. So in Old Town, it started with like $58 million for economic development. Right now, I think there's about 38 left. There's virtually no loans out in Old Town. And we posed the question, could we tie how much is kept for overhead for staffing to how much is expended in the district? And people went nuts on the call. Not the, not the committee members, the staff.
Yeah, I'd say it seems like a good idea, but you know.
Yeah, it seems like, like in business, you have to have a certain percent that is for staffing and then your cost of goods and right, like that's how it works. But this idea, and they came back and Jonathan was like, why is everyone so upset? They were trying to say, oh, they said, oh, you just want a skate park. Like that he would say something so outrageous because he wants a skate park. He's like, no, I'm, I'm asking about how do we use this most efficiently? Then they're like, just so everyone knows, Jonathan and his wife Jesse are just upset because we didn't lend to one of their clients. And we're like, why are you trying to cut the legs out from what I'm saying? This is a legitimate question. And then they came after and yelled at him and so.
Yeah.
I was like, this is so incredibly inappropriate.
Yeah, but you're saying of the, what is it, 30 whatever million?
38 million.
Basically none of it has gone out. Is that what you're saying?
Well, it's been lent and repaid and then, but you can keep using it. Like the point is that you can keep.
I see.
Lending to people, but it's not being lent.
Okay. And that's, yeah, I just pointed out because it's one of the things that frustrates me. I think a lot of people in the county in Portland that, you know, because I was going to talk about the homeless JOHS money in the county, but there's, it just seems to be this chronic problem that we have of like, we have all this funding, but there's this hesitancy to spend it in any effective way.
Totally. It's funny. I was interviewed by the firefighters union and they were like, what are your top three budget priorities and what percent of the budget is it? It was, I couldn't even calculate it because it was such a small percent of the budget. So like one of them, I was like, we need a central database of available shelter beds. And I said, I suggested this three years ago to the county and I said, I can help you. It's hotel software. And the central database is like a booking.com.
I'm pretty sure Kristen Olson from Rational Fund brought that up about you before. I remember that. Yeah.
And so they were like, how much would that cost? And I was like, $10,000. Like, and someone already has a grant. There's someone in Portland that received a grant for this from Travel Portland to build the platform. But you can just use the hotel software. Like I use it right now. It's like $200 a month, right? And someone said, well, the shelters wouldn't want to use it. And I was like, well, what if it's mandatory? And like that idea is so shocking to people that we would mandate something. And I was like.
What do you, yeah, what do you think that hesitancy, they just want to have this just stubborn, like we're going to do it ourselves kind of thing or something?
I'm not totally sure and I won't speak for it, but I will say someone at the county said, a lot of shelters don't want you to know how many beds go unused every night.
Hmm. Okay.
And I was like, well, that is not my problem. Our, we're in the business of getting beds used, right? So, um, so I find that generally unacceptable. And truthfully, even, do you know Martin vs. Boise?
Yes, I was going to actually ask you about the district.
Well, that was the main reason was how would we ever know if we have somewhere for someone to go? We don't track it.
Yeah.
Right? So can we just have a database where it's like, there are this many beds? And recently, the, I talked to someone at the joint office and they were like, why is that important? And I was like, um, do you remember the eighties before the internet? We had to use the phone book to like find a hotel room. I'm just trying to like distill it down for you. And I don't know if you've ever tried to get someone into shelter. Here's the process. And imagine you're not you. Imagine that you are mentally ill or you're high, but you know, you can't stay on the street tonight. It's not safe. You call 311, they email you a list of every single shelter.
Okay.
And then you.
Already a problem.
Right. Assuming you have a phone, assuming you have an email, then you have to call every single shelter and see if there's space.
Okay.
And.
How many are we talking about here? There's a dozen or something?
Probably about 30.
Okay.
And most of them are reservation-based and there's usually two to three week waiting list. So there's, no one plans on being homeless, right? So that's sort of a, an inappropriate process.
Yeah.
So we need to drastically increase the number of walk-in shelters.
I was just thinking, it's surprising that there's no just walk-in, like, you know.
There's some, but they're usually full because everyone, like warming shelters were walk-in.
Right, right.
And everyone found them when it was cold, right? The, the thing that we need to really talk through is philosophically, you know, people talk about housing first or low barrier or no barrier. You actually, you can't do that. You cannot have low barrier or no barrier because what it means is people can still be using, they can bring weapons, they can have pets. And not that all of those things are wrong in and of themselves, but no one will work there, right? Like we fear judgment, appearing judgmental so much on the west coast. But what I try and explain to people is that judgment is discernment. And you can discern that it is unsafe for the average worker to have to navigate this. If they're untrained in navigating this, or even if you are trained, someone high on meth is very dangerous. And ask me how I know, right? I've had people take fire extinguishers to our class. I've been chased down the street with a machete. Like I told someone during this press conference, I just watched a hatchet fight and then I got a parking ticket. Like, my mind is like exploding right now.
Extreme examples, but in a way, like even me out here in my neighborhood, I've seen a lot of that same stuff, like people in RVs with machetes and, but it's just, I think most Portlanders experience something like that. Like people in RVs with machetes and, um, but it's just, I think most Portlanders experience something like that and they know what you're talking about for sure. But it's, it is really surprising. That's what really frustrates me about the JOHS and homelessness stuff is like, there just seems to be like a refusal to even like track anything. And I don't know what that is, but it's just really.
Well, something for people to know is that someone just shared with me from the county, from one of the commissioner's offices that are there now. From the shelter system, we have a twenty six percent success rate. And I said, just so I know what that means. Twenty six percent of people in shelter successfully transitioned to better housing. He said, correct. And I said, what was the number before? And he said, something like four years ago or five years ago, we were at eighty percent.
Okay. Not a good, uh.
Yeah, we're going backwards. Yeah. So, um, not great. Things are not going great.
Yeah. Um, let me see here. I have so many questions. I was gonna ask you, let me stick on the JOHS stuff here now, but, um, yeah, because I just combined all these into like JOHS. I used to wanna say like, let's just disband this. I don't see any purpose to it. I also know, you know, I had Daniel DuMellon here as a city council candidate, who's on the Budget Advisory Committee. And it seems like, I also kind, kind of go that way of like, there's hope for it if there's enough scrutiny and skepticism and kind of fixes for it. But I'm curious your take on that, the unspent dollars. And also, yeah, I wrote down the Ninth Circuit cases. Like, what do you think?
My feeling is that theoretically, the county could just handle it, right? We have bond measure dollars. We have an amount that we put in the pot. I think it could possibly be fine if the city didn't need to contribute forty million dollars, right? By, this is the county's responsibility. This falls under their jurisdiction. I explain to people in the simplest of terms, the city is responsible for the health of the infrastructure, right? So roads, water, permits and first responders, so police, fire. The county is responsible for the health of its citizens. So addiction services, mental health services, SNAP benefits, OHP.
Ambulance, which I also wrote on there, yeah.
Oh, my God. Don't even get me started. Or you can, and I'll tell you what I think. But so, I think that the, what I would love to see is that we stop creating new things. See what is supposed to exist and just, it within the county infrastructure, can it operate successfully? Like, someone asked me, they were like, how are you gonna get county employees to do what you want when they maybe just want to work nine to five? And I was like, I've been leading teams for like twenty years at this point. I don't do anything where I come in guns a blazing, assuming everyone's gonna just do what I say, that I said. I come to the table assuming everyone wants to do a good job at their job. And usually, they already know the answer. Just no one's asking them. And no one is advocating once they get that answer. So I talked to someone in, from the sheriff's department, um, one of the deputies at the jail. And she said, did you know that we used to have, um, a dorm block in the jail that was rehab ready? And we would run rehab in jail. I was like, of course I didn't know that. And she's like, I don't know why we don't have that.
Yeah.
And I was, it just got cut. And I was like, probably because it wasn't, you know, sexy enough.
Yeah, yeah.
Dollars to be spent.
It's actually a big thing I'm gonna bring up because I'm having, uh, a woman on here from the sheriff's office or from corrections. But I have been almost completely convinced that like this is the way to go because, um, this kind of Venn diagram of criminality and addiction, to me, it just makes so much sense to have that rehab in the jail, which is right there. And I just, I don't know, a lot of people are just so anti-law enforcement that I think that's the reason why they don't want to see that. But to me, it makes total sense to do that. And I don't see why we're not doing it.
To be in a space where you're anti-law enforcement, you have to ask yourself who you're gonna call instead. Right? Because it's sort of like, um, and I'll get back to it in a second, but it's sort of the question of, you know, I've had a lot of young people say to me, you know, communism is the answer. And my grandfather fled communist China, so I'm like, I'm not sure that's the answer. But I talked to someone who grew up in communism and he said communism is for angels. What they ask of you is give everything you have and only take what you need. And that's the work of angels, right? Most humans won't do that. Even people that are for communism, right? And I've said, I would like to sponsor you with a one-way ticket to the communist country of your choice. You'll probably have to turn in your iPhone and you'll have to get yourself back, but you're just telling me you haven't traveled that much, right? Like, I've traveled all over the world for both my sports career and as an adult. And I'm not sure you know what you're talking about.
Yeah. And to tie it back to the, and specifically with jails and prisons, I mean, oh my God, you do not want to be in a communist country. I, I wouldn't want to be and go to prison in those.
And don't get me wrong. I know that there are problems, right? That there's.
Yeah, we can always improve.
Right. There are disproportionate number of marginalized communities in prison. And truthfully, some of that are the laws that are in place, the judges that are in place. It's not necessarily all related to the first responder, right? And to put a disproportionate responsibility on the person that showed up when someone was scared. And what I told people is, who are you going to call then? If you're like, get rid of it. You're assuming now we're a utopia and nothing bad is ever gonna happen again. And I can tell you where I work, there is a zero percent chance of.
Yeah, yeah, especially down there, yeah.
And that, when people show up, like, it's a, it's a hard job. You're the person that shows up when people are scared. You don't get to call anyone when you're scared, when you're in law enforcement. That you just hope that that vest works.
I think a lot of people, even Canada, City of Kansas up here now is just like Portland Street Response is handling all that. But, you know, I, I, I know people that have, you know, I'm sure you've dealt with this too. Like, they'll just pop a gun out in certain situations. And it's like, I don't think Portland Street Response is prepared for that. Or can handle a lot of other situations.
Well, and truthfully, even programs like Portland Street Response are never gonna work until we have more tools for people, right? That's my big.
Rehab centers and.
I mean, you have to be able to transport people somewhere, right? There's a woman, um, who is across from the hotel most days. She's severely mentally ill. She, you can find her banging her head against a brick wall until her face bleeds most days. She's sobbing in her tent the rest of the time. She's, I mean, it's horrifying. And I had an employee who was like, I'm gonna, I am gonna focus on getting her the help she needs. And she spent six weeks doing it. And Portland Street Response came and they, we were like, so why can't you help her? Because they came and talked to her and they said, look, our policy is if they can receive a cookie or a drink, then they're capable of caring for themselves. And I said, you could, a toddler could do that. And if I left a toddler outside, that would be considered child abuse and neglect. I think you need to assess their mental state and then decide about the receiving of a cookie or a drink. Or if someone at that age level mental state, what would that be deemed in the eyes of the law? Right? And I had some social workers from Multnomah County ask me to help them get a definition for gravely disabled into the state terminology of, you know, diagnoses. And I was like, who has it right now? They said, I don't know. And I said, I know, it's Massachusetts. Because Massachusetts is always consistently ranked top five. And I sent it to the state and I said, please do not change this, except Massachusetts to Oregon. We are not special. We keep rewriting policy as if we're exceptional. We're obviously not crushing it right now and people need to travel more to see that this is not normal. We're trying to normalize things that are not normal. I tell people even about addiction. If someone was an alcoholic, you wouldn't be like, awesome, keep going, right? When they're falling off the wagon and like getting, you know, totally hammered across the street. If you were really a caring person or their friend, you would intervene.
Yeah.
And with this particular, these two drugs, people are like, keep going, no judgment.
Yeah. Well, I was thinking, yeah, in your example, it's interesting because people bring up here, we used to have cheers. But I was thinking, it's almost like if cheers, the little cheers vans were what I'm talking about. But it's almost like if cheers was going around giving, handing out alcohol instead of.
That's right. Well, and it's one of the things that we need is we have to have sobering centers again, right? That would be one of the tools is, and it's complicated.
Designed for these drugs.
Right. For meth and fentanyl. Meth makes people unsafe to the public. Like, it is not normal. I am with tourists every single day and they cannot believe what we allow. They're from all over the world and they were like, you just let people walk around with machetes high on meth? And I'm like, I'm so sorry. Would you like me to get you an escort to your next location, right? Like.
And we wonder why downtown's so empty.
Right. People forget what is normal. And that's been my concern is if we let this go too long, we're gonna normalize it. And then you go somewhere else and you're like, oh, it's so peaceful here. Like even New York City, you're like, oh my God, it's so peaceful here. It's so safe. And we're like, Portland, Oregon isn't functioning like this.
It's one of the reasons I put the Ninth Circuit thing in here because I've been, I don't know. People put this together probably way before me, but to me, so much of that because of the Martin versus Boise case and these certain law, uh, laws that are, I think going to the Supreme Court eventually, but, um, it's like a West Coast Ninth Circuit problem.
Right.
Obviously, there's homelessness everywhere, but we really have it exploded here in that, in that Ninth Circuit, it seems like.
Yes. And I actually learned, I could be wrong. I, I haven't looked this up yet. But someone from the city said, even if the Supreme Court overturns Martin versus Boise, Oregon codified it. So we might need to check that.
It wouldn't surprise me, yeah. Yeah. Uh, so yeah, what about this ambulance thing? I mean, this might be a quick question of.
It will be a quick question.
You, you just wanna go to the one-to-one.
Most ridiculous thing I have ever seen in my life. Because you have a control, right? You see other, every other county changed. And they're getting to ninety percent of their calls. We think we're special, so we're like, no.
Yeah.
But it's ridiculous because the rationale, every business wants to meet the need of their customers too. Every business wants to meet the need of their contracts. There's no one in the pipeline. There's no one coming.
That's what frustrates me about the AMR kind of thing is like, I think, yeah, I don't know if Jessica Vega-Piedrin or certain people in the county think that like, there's more to be squeezed out of AMR, but it's, is my understanding there's a nationwide, uh, paramedic shortage, yeah.
You can just look at the enrollment rates of EMT and paramedic schools. There's no one there.
Yeah, it's not like you can get any more out of that.
It's just sort of this like alternate reality or magical thinking. And, and they're like, not only do we say no, we're gonna find you. And it's like.
Right, right.
Okay, well then, don't outsource it. Keep it internal. You guys see what you can do.
Yeah, it, yeah, it does seem like a, at least it struck me as a bad idea to go after the, the only ambulance company that's, you know, doing things here.
But, um, it's the lowest hanging fruit that you could possibly have.
Yeah. And that's kind of, I don't know. I almost wrote that down here. That's what it seems like a lot of the county does right now is kind of go after the lowest hanging fruit politically.
Right. And do the opposite. They do the opposite of what you should do. Because I think that they misunderstand. I tell people, the city is all caught up with public sentiment. The county is about a year or two behind. And the state's two to three years behind, just so you know. And they have no sense of how people are feeling. And so the fact that they keep voting this way, like more and more of the population is about to turn against them to be like, what are you doing? Why are we paying for this? Like, you've probably seen the tax rates, right? Like.
Yeah, I know we're.
Second to Manhattan.
Top and like, yeah.
But if you do it by the numbers, like what triggers the maximum? In Multnomah County, the trigger is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of income. In Manhattan, it's twenty million dollars of income. So by those numbers, by far, we are the highest.
Yeah. And, and you know, I, I'm gonna say, I won't, I don't even make a hundred and twenty thousand, but that's not a lot of money in these, you know, inflation times.
Well, and what people, there's this like, business is bad, people that make money are bad, there, and it's, you can't, you'll never change anything if you try and find an enemy in every situation. I, I tell everyone, I assume that everyone is compassionate and everyone is progressive. Meaning they want things to be better than yesterday. I didn't know that people had recently taken that term to mean something else. So I think everyone wants things to be better than they were before and that they care about other people. And until you prove me wrong, that's how I'll treat you. And I know a lot of people come to the table totally differently, that they're, if you're politically associated with another party, you're on the outs. If you have ever said anything that offends them, you're on the outs. And I, I think that growing up in DC, you're the epicenter of politics, right? And everyone's on diff, and I tell people, everyone had different life experiences that got them to the place that they're at today. So just don't judge people.
Yeah, I bet that helped you keep an open mind, is that kind of interesting, yeah.
The Chinese side of my family is super liberal and the other side of my family is super conservative. And everyone still shows up for the crab feast every year, right?
It's definitely a problem up here. It's one of the reasons I wanted to start this show is it's just like, I don't know. There's too much of that. And I used to be kind of like, that super close-minded person who didn't want to talk to any other political viewpoint and I'm just, I just got so tired of it. But yeah, we need more.
Right.
Open conversation with all opinions.
It makes people, it actually makes you less smart, right? You have to be willing to hear what other people have, like what ideas they have. Because you're essentially gonna shut off fifty percent of ideas that could exist in the world. It's why I actually never affiliated with a party, even in college. Because I wanted to force myself to read everyone's platform and read every single position on, to know which way to go. I didn't, I didn't want to blindly assume that one side would just select for me. And I'm just gonna go down the ballot like that because it, it makes you less informed and.
Yeah, it is. I honestly wish, because I was gonna ask you something about, um, like how the city doesn't have designations and the county, I'm guessing doesn't either, but.
Yeah, it's nonpartisan.
Wish everything was like that.
Totally.
National elections and I don't know, I think it makes people think more and there's not as much just, um.
Right. Because then you just, it's just association. Oh, I, I have to do this because.
It's everyone's on teams and, yeah.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
Do you know what time it is?
Yeah, it's, uh, almost noon.
Okay. I just have to pick up my kids at, um, twelve thirty.
Okay. All right. Yeah, we're getting, uh, I'm getting towards the end here. Um, okay. Yeah, we did kind of go through most of these. I wanted to ask you, and I, I have a bunch of silly questions at the end. I hope that's okay.
No problem.
Getting to that. But I wanted to ask you, because he, I'll ask your Northwest story in a second, but do you remember Kirk Reeves, that guy? He was, okay. I was gonna tie this in with my homelessness, but he used to sit by the Hawthorne Bridge and he had like rubber chickens. He's a homeless guy. This is before homelessness exploded. But he's like this thin black dude and he would write jokes and like do songs on like a, some kind of instrument.
Oh, he played the trumpet?
Yes. Okay, you know who I'm talking about, okay.
He was on the Hawthorne Bridge, right?
Yeah. And sometimes he'd be by Powell's or different, but, uh, I was just curious. I always think about him. We did like a big story at KGW when I worked there when he died, but. I don't know. To me, I was, I was kind of putting you to a test of like your history knowledge of that, but, uh, I just, I don't know. To me, that also like, it's like a better time as far as city management and stuff and, um, I don't know.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, truthfully, in Old Town, it's always been hard.
I bet, yeah.
Even from the start of the city, right? Like, it's the original downtown. It was a port town.
Well, Shanghai and all that stuff.
All those hotels were run by gangsters where people, to be Shanghai is to essentially become an indentured servant back to the ship's captain. And find out you're going to Shanghai, right? So like.
Unwillingly, obviously.
Right. Well, because the, there were crimps that would make a deal with, they owned the hotels that would go to the ship's captain. Captains couldn't get people to come back and be sailors. So they would say, okay, we'll get them in debt and then we'll sell them back to you. Which is, that's what it is to essentially be Shanghai.
Okay.
There's actually an OPB thing about it.
Okay, yeah, yeah. I used to go to the Shanghai bar, what's it called? Shanghai Towne Bar.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and then when they, and so Chinatown is over by Pine Street Market. Japan Town was in, um, where Japan Town remains today. And then they wanted to move downtown south. And so they forced the Chinese community to live in the Japanese community, which there were rifts there already. The Chinese Exclusion Act was alive and well, so Chinese people couldn't own land. Japanese people owned properties. Then they, uh, did Japanese internment during, uh. Right. And then, um, they lifted the Chinese Exclusion Act like a month later. So then the Chinese community bought a lot of the land that was owned by Japanese community members, furthering the rift. And then land was cheap. And a lot of social services came in and started buying the land. So it's like, everyone's like, oh, why is the city just showing up now? And I'm like, don't misunderstand. It's never been awesome. So.
Yeah. No, that's interesting. I didn't know a lot of that stuff, yeah. I only, I just brought them up because, yeah, it's like, and I don't want to make this sound bad, but that seemed like a better time for homelessness, for whatever reason, when I think of Kirk Reeves, but, um. Okay. Yeah. Tell me about your Northwest story. You kind of did it already. You came from DC, uh, after you did your.
Do you mean how I got here?
Yeah, like, I always ask people like, how did Portland get on your radar? Was it like a school thing, like a business thing or?
No, uh, my husband wanted to, so I had traveled a lot. He had never traveled and he hadn't ever really been west of the Mississippi. So he did for a couple of summers, um, just before he graduated. We were at Penn State. And then he was like, I visited Portland. I think we should go live in Portland. And I was like, surely we should move to New York City. Um, but, uh.
What time, what year was this?
This is in the early two thousands.
Okay.
So. Um, so, we came out here and he, he was an aerospace engineer. And his career choices at the time, if he stayed, were to build spaceships or bombs. Um, which neither were interesting to him. So he, he wanted to go into alternative energy.
Okay.
So he started a solar contracting company and um, and it was, you know, I think, it was a different time. It was very small. Um, I was really freaked out that there were like no international flights. Cuz I was like traveling abroad every other week before and um, I felt like a little claustrophobic.
Yeah, I was saying, is it still kinda like that? I mean, we have some international.
We have some, it's the direct flights that you know if you're a big enough city.
Right.
Um, and we cut some of those during the pandemic because tourists weren't coming. Um, we have been one of the slowest to recover. Um, but, you know, that's, that's how we got here, with three kids later.
Yeah, it's funny, I've talked to a lot of people recently who moved, I moved here in two thousand and six, but it sounds like you're a little earlier.
Yeah, we got here two thousand and three.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cool, um, alright, I got some goofy questions, wrap it up here. Let's say you're parking, so you park out here. But I always tell people, it's like a normal painted line spot. You back in or do you pull in?
Uh, I pull in.
Okay, like most normal people, I think, do that.
Yeah, uh, I live for the fact that a lot of people don't know how to parallel park here. And um, or like fear backing up. So I, I always know that if someone's trying to parallel park, there's a good chance that they won't make it and they'll pull away. So I just wait behind them.
Yeah, okay, okay, um, cool. Um, which fruit do you think you could throw the farthest?
Good question. I don't know, maybe like a lime. Seems like appropriately dense, but smaller, so it could go further.
I don't, and I don't have like the actual scientific answer, I just, I'm just curious, like what people say. I think a banana and everyone thinks I'm crazy for saying that, but.
Well, I guess it has like the, what, what is that um, thing you can throw that's curved like that?
The boomerang?
Yeah, boomerang effect.
I hope so.
Maybe it comes back.
Yeah, I need to actually do these tests one day and see what happens. Um, okay, I have these like peanut butter wars between all of them, I guess. Are you crunchy or smooth peanut butter, first of all, do you like, or do you like?
Smooth peanut butter.
Okay, and do you like oil, no oil?
Do you mean, like, do you have to stir it?
Stir or no stir, yeah.
Uh, no stir. Who likes stir? That is like the worst invention, is essentially like, oh.
That's the best answer I've heard.
You just don't wanna eat peanut butter? That's what that means, like, oh, I have to like either pour this off or like.
Yeah, I'm totally, I'm totally.
I have to do the churning process myself? Awesome, I'm so glad I paid for this.
And, yeah, I just, I see the oil when I go in there and it's like, I can't, can't do that, I have to.
I know, I I can't believe that that is even a product that gets sold. It's like, it should be cheaper because you have to participate in the process.
It's a lot of uh, man, you know, uh, I was gonna say manual labor, but something like that. Um, okay, um, keep going through the, do you have a favorite french fries? Do you like crinkle cut curly fries, waffle fries?
I actually like tater tots the best.
Tots, that's it, I was waiting for someone to bring up.
Tots, Napoleon.
I was waiting for someone to bring up tots cuz someone recently brought up Jojos, which is another kind of similar potato.
I didn't know they were called Jojos till I moved here and I didn't know you ate anything with ranch, except salads until I moved here.
It's a lot of ranch, a lot of ranch. Do you, in your house, or I guess wherever, maybe in your business, do you keep the butter out or do you keep it in the fridge?
I keep it out.
Okay.
Yeah, I think my mom always did that too. If it's salted, it's preserved, but uh, you cannot spread it. I actually even have, I noticed this morning, my husband started using, you know, the little brush that you use for basting.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the food brush, yeah, whatever, yeah.
Man, we look like super culinary, we're like brushing it on a toast for our kids.
I like that, yeah, that's like cool, it's like a butter brush.
Yeah.
Uh, let's see here, this one's kinda weird. I didn't wanna ask you this cuz it's kind of awkward question, but let me phrase it this way. I sleep with my socks on and people think that's weird.
I don't think it's weird. I have very cold feet and I usually start with socks and somehow I don't have them when I wake up, so. I'm also going through perimenopause, so I have hot flashes all the time. So, I'm like, like sweating all night and I'm like, get everything off or, but I'm like freezing when I get it, but so.
I like it, I like this support though, like, this is my first like supporter, or, you know, you sometimes do.
Yes, it's, I mean, if you have low blood pressure, you don't get, your extremities are always cold.
Okay, maybe I have low blood pressure, yeah. Maybe, um, let's say you're getting ice cream at Salt and Straw or somewhere, do you go cone, waffle cone, cup?
I actually have to go cup because I have celiac disease for real.
So you can't get the, um, what's it called, the gluten?
Correct.
Yeah.
Um, I was super sick in high school and college, like bleeding internally and they didn't know what it was. Um, and then three years after I opened my bakery, I, they did a biopsy. Could see that the villi in my digestive tract were blunted, which is, means you have celiac disease. Cuz your body, when you eat gluten, it sees it as foreign and sends friendly fire to kill the villi. Um, and it, to kill the gluten, but it kills the villi, um, is a byproduct of it. And so I was like, man, that's a real bummer. Do you know what I do for a living? I operate a bakery, so.
That is kind of ironic, yeah. You're one of the first people I met that actually has that too. And I, cuz there's so many people, I used to think I had in my twenties and then I went to the doctor and they're like, no, you're just like, you're eating like junk, that's a problem. But yeah, I know there, people do actually have that.
Yeah, I actually, because I had been so sick um, growing up that I like that day went cold turkey.
Wow.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, um, that's kind of it. I was gonna ask you, I ask everyone kind of, do you have like a local place you wanna shout out? Like, do you have a good meal recently or some kind of business that you?
Yes, actually, um, so there's this supper club, uh, what is it called? Tasting Collective, which is kind of fun. That's not the thing I'm gonna shout out, but it's how I found this place. So they, they take over restaurants on their slowest days, so Tuesdays and Wednesdays. And they rotate and they have the chef come and talk to you about the restaurant. And there's this new one, I think it's on Sandy, it's called Zhao Yi, which means midnight snack um, in Chinese. And it's this young couple that uh, they, like, the menu is not singularly focused. It's literally like what you would have as midnight snacks, but super well done. Um, and the decor is really sweet, they're really sweet, so.
That's cool. Is that something that's like popping off right now? It's almost like a ghost kitchen, but you can come in and eat there?
Well, they're, it's a regular restaurant all the time. We just went, it's how they expose more restaurants to people. Instead of like the usual suspects that you would go to, so.
They'll have like a rotating?
So they don't go, they only go once and then they'll go to another restaurant the next month, um, so that you get exposure to it.
I see, yeah, that's cool. Cool, yeah, um, yeah, is there anything else you wanna talk about before we wrap it up here?
I don't think so.
Well, yeah, thanks for coming, yeah, um, yeah, I I really hope you win.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, and I, I was gonna say, I can't remember, I think I might have donated to you already, but I'll get, I gave everyone a donation that comes on here and I'll do that if I haven't.
Yes, just so your audience knows, the weird limits uh, for the county. So, district attorney is a state race technically.
Okay.
And so their limits are unlimited.
I didn't know that.
Multnomah County Commissioners, uh, the maximum is five hundred and sixty-eight dollars. I've heard that, such a weird amount, yeah. There, well, it was five hundred and then increasing with inflation, but they were like, someone was like, I wanna give you five thousand dollars. And I was like, thank you, you can give me five hundred and sixty-eight. So, it's a pure volume game of um, people.
And yeah, just uh, go to your website and all that stuff.
Yeah, so my website is jessieburke.com, J E S S I E B U R K E. And on social media, it's just Jesse for Nopo, uh, because that is my neighborhood, so.
Yeah, well, yeah, thanks so much for doing this, uh, I liked this conversation.
Yeah, me too.